Make sure they're reminded we're in town.
I am. I just tried to read. Turn this off, do. Let me know when you're ready to go. So, good afternoon. We are going to call the Victoria County Council meeting for July twenty-second to order. We would like to acknowledge this meeting is being held in Unamaggi, one of the seven traditional districts of the Mi'kmaq and the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. So, the agenda has been circulated to you, council. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, can we have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second or for the?
Second.
Second by councillor Longba. It's been moved by councillor McNeil, second by councillor Longba. We approve the agenda circulated all in favor. Contrary minded, motion carried. The agenda has been approved. We will mention today that we received regrets from councillor McDonald, who was unable to join us today to health issues. So, that is noted in the minutes. So, this evening, our first presentation is from John Bain, the director of the Eastern District Planning Commission. So, Mr. Bain, we'll turn it over to you, go through your presentation, and we'll open it to questions upon the completion of your report. And I would just, your mic is on if it's got a green dot, John, and if you would speak directly into it, we would appreciate that as well.
Thank you, Warden. So, the reason why I'm here on your agenda this evening is because I was asked to present my annual report. The Municipal Government Act requires me to have a annual report to all of my councils by June thirtieth. And that report includes a summary of all of the activities of the commission over the last year, as well as a budget for next year and the audited statement of the past year. So, that was submitted June thirtieth. Give me till June thirtieth. I take till June which I think was a Sunday this year. So, for all intents and purposes, I'm the director of planning for the Victoria, for Victoria County. And so, we're responsible for any planning related matters, primarily with respect to Badaq. That's where the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw is in place and the wind turbine bylaw that covers the whole of the county. You're aware that over the last year, the last number of years, the province has required from all municipalities in the province of Nova Scotia to adopt planning documents for all unzoned areas. And that's probably the main thing that has, the commission has been involved with kind of on the side because we hired consultants to do that. And that was, is still under, is being written still. We had community meetings across the county in different communities throughout the province, throughout the county, and that document is to a final draft stage, but it still needs probably some revisions. You'll remember that the funding was through the municipal modernization fund. So, we got some provincial funding for that. And the intent is that wherever possible, there'll be similarities across the region in these land use bylaws. So, there's, there, so we're doing it in Inverness County, Richmond County, Victoria County, and Ananquinish County. And there's also supposed to be similarities between the CBRM document. So, that's where we got our funding. And so, the province paid fifty percent of the cost of hiring the consultants. And where there can be, where there are commonalities, the document tries to reflect those commonalities. And where there are differences, then obviously the document reflects the differences that are unique to those communities. But that was some of the, that was some of the rationale behind the document in the first place. And were, were, have Richmond Counties adopted, Ananquinish Counties with the Minister for Review, Inverness Counties. Not sure where Inverness Counties is. It's further behind than Victoria County. The Victoria County, we're just kind of wrapping that up. And we've got a final document. The other thing that the commission's been dealing with over the last year is the plan review for the community of Badaq. It's the village plus a little broader than that for the zoning. And that document got COVID delayed a number of times. But now I have a staff person that's dedicated to that. And we're meeting with the area advisory committee, reorganized. And probably those are the two major things from a policy point of view, what we've been doing over the last year, the mandatory planning and the Badaq plan review. So, we issue all your building permits. And building permits, the number of building permits decreased over the last year from a hundred and fifty. So, I, my, my statistics are based on fiscal year, not calendar year. But permits dropped from a hundred and fifty-two permits being issued to about a hundred and eighteen permits issued last year. But the value of your permits increased. So, we went from twenty-five million dollars of construction value to twenty-seven million dollars of construction value. So, the average permit increased from about sixteen point, sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the average permit to twenty-three thousand. That's about constant across the region. When I'm talking about the region, I'm talking about Inverness, Richmond, Victoria, Towneport, Hossbury, Towneport, Ananquinish, and Ananquinish Counties. So, that average is about the same across the, across the region. Twenty-seven thousand, twenty-three thousand and some dollars per building permit issued. And fees, you'll remember that we amended our fees to more directly reflect the the work that is done in inspecting buildings. So, so the increase in permit fees, if you look back to over the last five years, in twenty nineteen, there was about thirty thousand dollars in revenues, twenty twenty, forty-one thousand dollars in revenues, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, sixteen, seventeen thousand in revenues. Then it jumped. So, our, our, our estimate of construction value is much more accurate now. So, we're using an industry standard. And if the industry standard is too, too high, then it's, then we will take the actual contracted value for, for permit revenues. So, it went from thirty-three thousand to sixty-four thousand. And then this year went up again to sixty-five thousand dollars worth of revenues. Lots created. So, the lots created in the county three-year subdivision process, that, that varies a fair bit year to year. Last year, there were only thirty-two lots created. The year before, there were sixty-five. The year before that, there were seventy-two. So, it's a fifty percent decrease in the number of lots that were created from sixty-five to thirty-two. Our permits are ups, our revenues are up slightly. Value of construction is up five percent. Housing starts are up fractionally. And, and the value of construction again from twenty-five million, we find them seven million to twenty-seven point one. The other thing that we do, so district planning, not only does your planning and your policy and building permits and subdivision approvals, we also do civic addressing. So, we're responsible for any new construction that civic addresses be issued and posted. We also deal with name changes of roads if that's required. Those are processed through my office. We issue the blue plate with the reflective numbers on it. We're also responsible for dangerous and unsightly premises, one of my favorite files. And so, the, the act requires us to report on in the annual report. So, there are some things in the annual report that are there because they are a requirement, a specific requirement to be reported on. So, dangers and unsightly premises are one of them. So, that's towards the middle of the document. For Victoria County, there were sixteen cases. In five cases, we issued orders. And there's ten cases that are, were still in progress at the time that this was at the end of June. So, we are having, we are having more success with voluntary compliance. I think this council, as all my councils are aware, dangers and unsightly premises is a small part of what we do, but it's a very loud part of what we do. So, that's what you as councils hear a lot of times. And internally, we shifted the responsibility of dangerous and unsightly premises to my manager of inspection services. So, Sean Donovan is, is primarily responsible for seeing that those files are acted upon, that they don't fall through the cracks, that we're, we're following up, we're seeing where they are and trying to get voluntary compliance. Voluntary compliance is our primary means of trying to get enforcement with dangerous and unsightly premises. But we do issue orders. We do issue demolition orders and we do issue some real expense tickets when, when the situation arises. The auditor report is at the back of the, so the budget, it's a two-point-one million dollar budget. The Victoria County's contribution to that is nine hundred and seventy-one. No, it isn't. It's one hundred and, nice, it was nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That caused, that caused a few councillors to just sit up and take notice. No, it is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars of Victoria County's contribution to that budget. Plus, building permit revenues and subdivision revenues go into the, into the commissions budget. As well as building permit revenues. So, it's a, it's a gross budget of two-point-two million dollars. Building permit revenues make up six hundred thousand dollars of that from a budget point of view. Subdivision fees, fifty, fifty-five thousand. Miscellaneous revenues. In the budget, there's a five hundred, half a million dollars for floodline mapping. So, this is an important point to make. The province gave us half a million dollars to do mapping for floodline mapping across the, across Cape Breton Island, excluding CBRM and excluding the Bredor. So, we're doing all of the coastline of Victoria County and Inverness County and Richmond County, the external coastline. And that, we needed an RFP for that. That closed a couple of weeks and that ago, and that was granted to CBCL for about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we're, we've got half a million. So, there's a little bit of room there to perhaps broaden the amount of mapping and the amount of information that we're taking. But yeah, the, the money for that was given to us in last fiscal year, but it'll be spent in this fiscal year. The intermunicipal service agreement is part of the report, and then there's the auditor report from last year. We're running with a bit of a surplus. The accumulated surplus as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four is three hundred and sixty thousand, seven thousand dollars. And there are any questions that you have about the report, kind of the statement, what we were doing with the last year, statistics that I've given you? No questions about dangers and unsightly premises?
We shall see.
That's why the report has presented. You have a, you had an electronic copy of this back when I submitted it.
Thank you very much for your report, John. We appreciate it. Excellent report. We're going to open it to any questions from council. We'll start with councillor Patterson, please.
Thank you, Warden. John, the last point or second last point you made there about the coastline mapping, you said it didn't include the Bredor Lake. Was there a reason why?
Bredor is not included because that'll be a, a different RFP. And that one includes partnerships with the First Nations communities in particular. So, we'll likely be involved in that one as well, but it is a, it would be a different funding request for proposals.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Bain? Councillor McNeil.
And thank you, John. Just wondering about since the province finished the coastal protection, like not doing the coastal protections, and where would that be for eastern district planning now in the future? And your budget, would you need more employees to, for us to act on that coastal protection point?
Yeah, thanks for that. The Coastal Protection Act, as you know, the province stopped that. And, and now they put, they put together a a guide for municipalities on how to protect the coast. So, they, they moved it to a clear municipal responsibility. As part of that, they've set up a a consultant group, a group of consultants that they're reaching out to, to consultants, it's the wrong word because I'm on it. So, and yeah, so we've had our first meeting. The, the province is looking at some standardized wording that could be adopted into municipal planning strategies and land use bylaws. And they're going to put that out to consulting firms. And I'm one of the advisors that is, is sitting on that, on that committee at the direct request of your CAO and Inverness County CAO. So, I was voluntold to be, to be on that committee. And I, and I think it's very important that there is a municipal representative because they're, they're still missing the whole subdivision side of it, right? So, they're, they're dealing with the zoning side of it for coastal protection and ignoring the fact that you can create lots that may in fact end up being non-buildable, right? And so, I, so I, I raised that. I raised that in the original consultation, and then I've raised that again with them. But if you're going to be looking at this, you really want to look at at a subdivision stage. Once that's a, once that's approved by the province, it's just suggested guidelines for municipalities to adopt? And? Yeah, well, absolutely. Yeah. So, as, so as you, when the municipality was, when the province was looking at adopted this, the coastal protection legislation, Victoria County Council and my board were very clear to the province that if it was a provincial initiative, it should be a provincial responsibility. And we saw it as a department of environment responsibility. So, now they've said, well, no, we're not going to do that. We made it voluntary if the municipalities want to do it. So, but I, I don't have to tell Victoria County Councils how crucial coastal protection is. So, I guess the short answer is yes. Going to constantly block my, twenty minutes.
Any other questions or comments for John? We're good. John, I want to thank you very much for your, and let's see, A O, any questions or comments? So, I want to thank you very much for your presentation and providing the documents this afternoon, your annual report, copies of that annual report, printed copies. A couple of them are here. They're also online on your website, I would assume, and our, our website, or will be. We need a motion to approve. So, we would like to have a motion to accept the annual report and financial statements of the Eastern District Planning Commission for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Question?
Thank you, councillor MacLeod. It's been moved by councillor MacLeod.
Second.
Second by deputy Warden Dofny. All in favor? Contrary minded. Additional discussion, motions carried. Thank you. Thank you, John. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, and that, those are the minutes for our June twentieth council meeting. And also of the special council meeting that was held virtually May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Those minutes were sent to you. You've had a chance to review them. Were there any errors or omissions in the May twenty-ninth minutes? Hearing none, can we have a motion to accept the minutes from the special council meeting of May twenty-ninth?
I make that a motion.
It's moved by councillor Longba, seconded by councillor McNeil. All in favor? Contrary minded, motion carried. The minutes are approved. We're also going to look at the minutes. June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, those minutes also were circulated to you. You had a chance to review them. Is there any errors or omissions in those minutes? Hearing neither, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our council meeting on June twentieth?
So, moved.
Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by councillor Oregon. All in favor? Contrary minded, further discussion. Motion is carried. The minutes are approved. Next item of council is the CAO's report. I'll turn it over to Leanne. She has forwarded a copy to you in your council package. So, go ahead, Leanne, please.
Thanks. So, I'm just going to highlight just a couple of things just to make you all aware. So, items in follow-up of earlier requests, there's been Victoria County signs installed in District Five. They've been replaced and they look wonderful over there. We've received lots of nice comments on those. So, thanks to staff for doing that. As you all just learned based on an earlier meeting today, we've signed an MOU with, between VCT and Alderwood for sharing of a transit bus with Alderwood so the residents can get out and about. So, that's a nice, good news story that we have. The Housing Accelerator Fund has opened up again. So, our economic development officer is looking to update the application that we have. We were denied the first time or turned down the first time that we put it in. We've asked for a debriefing to go over some of the points that we could do better on or be more specific on. They were unable to give us any help related to it, but they've opened the fund back up. So, we're going to give it another try. So, a couple of things to note from some of the different departments. In communications, the next newsletter is almost ready to go and will be going out the first of August. There's also been election meetings for, between staff and returning officer in preparation for the elections and with communications. In finance and HR, there is a tender tax sale happening or deadline of July thirtieth. So far, there's three properties on that, and that is online. Our next in-person tax sale will be November twenty-sixth, and then the next one after that will be March eleventh. Our thirty-day letters have gone out for the November tax sale. Tax bills have all gone out in the past week or so, so you all should have received them. And water bills also went out last week. So, I'm not sure if you've been getting calls or not, but water bills have gone out, and they're the first one with the next increase for the twenty twenty-four year. So, the rate has gone up. We are getting a lot of interest in the PACE program for energy updates. There's information on that on our website, and we have a PACE loan available for energy upgrades to homes. In the Public Works Department, the treated wood ban is in full effect right now. And so far, it's been quite smooth. Knock on wood as far as we know, but the, the, the full ban is in place. There's a new light bulb recycling program coming back. It's beginning in August and for businesses and residential. In the past, we've only received light bulbs from residential, but this will be for businesses and residential, and any types of light bulbs will be accepted. So, I think Jackie Downey, your area, there were some issues with that in the past. So, this is good news. We are currently also working on a tender for an efficiency upgrade to all of our sites. So, to see if we can get some heat pumps put into all of our buildings to make things a little bit more efficient. In our tourism department, so not sure if anyone has seen it, but Colleen has scoured websites and called organizations to complete an exhaustive list of events and activities that are happening throughout Victoria County this summer and fall. And it's also, there's pieces of it available online and is being constantly updated. But it's at the Visitor Information Center. There's paper copies of it, and it's out at some of the tourism operators, and it's a lot of work that's been put into this and very impressive. Yep. And it's color-coded and shows everything that is going on within the county. So, it's great. It's mostly used as resource for the VIC and for tourism operators to advise guests. And it'll be updated at the VIC and Badaq on a regular basis as new events are announced. In community development, Dan's visited some place, the placemaking location in Ananquinish, known as Cops Cove. And he's noted that there's a major increase in use of the space by the locals down there. And it's created an enjoyable gathering place that feels good to spend, good to spend time in. Larry, I'm not sure if you've noticed more use of it. That's great. He's also had some meetings in Dingwall with, with an organization for the next steps and discussions on the next placemaking space that we're working on for three-ten Dingwall Road. And discussions there involving the placement of a public washroom as well as a community garden project. In recreation, the, I have noted here that the Wellness Warrior Gymboree was on Saturday, but that was unfortunately postponed or it was postponed. uh, it was postponed. Um, we have some e-bikes that we've ordered that are going to be available for rent, but unfortunately, based on the, uh, our popularity of e-bikes, we've, there's been a delay on those from our supplier. Um, it's anticipated they will be arriving mid-August and we'll be looking to launch, um, a program on e-bike rental. And we've also held our first Girls on Boards programs. Um, the, actually, the first one that was supposed to happen was postponed due to a threat of thunder and lightning, uh, and the other set of session was a success, the second one, um, and it seems to be very well received by participants. Um, in our Trails Department, the Trails Committee met to review some funding applications submitted to the Trails Development Support Group. And there was three, um, deserving groups, uh, snowmobile, A T V and recreational trail society groups that have received some good funding for trail work that they're working on. Uh, we're also working to continue on planning and permitting for the next section of the trail that we are developing. And an R F P is expected out this week for the Big Hill Road section of the trail work, um, based on our original plan. Our E D O, um, was off for a bit earlier on. He's at, he actually, uh, had, he got married over the, in June, so he was, he took some time off, but uh, now that he's back, he is still working on the E V feasibility study. It's progressing smoothly, remains on track for a mid-August, um, completion as planned on that. So that's, um, electronic vehicle chargings, charging stations and the feasibility of, um, some type of partnership with the municipality for corporation for setting them up around the county. Couple of other things to note, uh, elections planning is still ongoing. I'm sure you've seen some of the posts that we've put out in relation to it. And we're encouraging anyone who has any interest to contact where Gallup on how to get their name, uh, to come forward. Um, some good news that we received this week, we reached a settlement on the Inghamish roof that had damage from Hurricane Fiona. And we've been in a bit of a battle with insurance on the different, uh, roof type that we needed down there. So we've, uh, come to a pretty good conclusion on that this week. So, uh, hopefully receive that check this week. Uh, working with a senior safety officer on an aging and mental health project, uh, with seniors and a group, I believe, out of Halifax that is looking to implement a new, uh, project on mental health. Um, and last, uh, point, we had a meeting with, uh, restorative justice this past week. Uh, there was three members of us who, uh, spoke to them about the aftermaths of village issues after, um, after there was some in relation to, uh, Megan Cooper's, uh, conviction. Uh, August twenty fourth is her next expected court date, but restorative justice have told us that they're, they are going to be expecting to request more time before sentencing. So if anyone is planning on going on August twenty fifth, I'd save the gas because it's not going to happen on that date. So that's all what I have. If there's any other questions?
Thank you very much. You have, uh, heard the C A O's report. You also received it in print as well. Any questions or comments in regards to any of the items that, uh, Leanne spoke to or it was in the report, Councilor Long?
Uh, I just wondered when the, uh, deadline is for people who want to put their name forward to run.
All that information is available online, but I believe it's September tenth. September, thank you. September tenth.
Any other questions, Council Oregon and then Council Patterson?
The Girls on Boards programs, that's going to be offered North of Smoky anytime soon. Think that it's a, a project that's being worked on here, but I expect that he will be, uh, expanding that out throughout the county. Cause, um, it's a group from, I believe, from Halifax that are coming in to, uh, partner with us right now. And then, yes, hoping to expand it. Yeah.
Council Patterson?
Uh, thank you. Well, just regarding the signs, uh, the Victoria County signs, they do look great. Uh, they're a white background. And I think one of the knocks with the original ones were the blue background and the green, there was much contrast. But there's been all kinds of comments on the, uh, the new ones. So thanks to all the staff who put that together.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, uh, Council McLeod.
Thank you. Uh, just about the PACE program, I had some, uh, questions, uh, phone calls. Before they were asking on front, uh, pay two hundred fifty dollars and they're now asking for six fifty. So I don't know if they can check it out that why it's so high now to, you know, when you apply, you need to pay something. So I don't know. I don't know. It's will be so inviting to, uh, you know, people is asking for loans. So it's.
Right. So it is a program that's run by Clean Energy or Clean Nova Scotia. So we can ask them why that price running went up. They're probably just going to say it's the same reason everything is going up, but I can certainly look into that. Yep.
Any other questions or comments? I have one that should have been under old business from, uh, our last council meeting. We had a, uh, request from the St. Anne's Bay Development Association for, uh, questioning whether or not the municipality would take over the, uh, the program, the Time Bank Program, and we referred it to staff for recommendations. So, uh, do you have a recommendation for that, please?
So I think that they were not looking for us to take over their group. They were looking to have it expanded throughout the county. Um, and currently with their current provision, that was, so it's not built into the budget. And this current staff that we have don't have the capacity, uh, based on the hours at this time. So it might be something that, uh, could be brought forward for the next budget.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will, uh, let the representatives know and it was, uh, discussed with staff and that, uh, we'll defer to budget and.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Um, I don't think that they were looking to expand the program. I think that they were looking to have a senior safety person that we have, uh, like the, uh, a contact for the program to run it, like the program that is existing. That I think is what they want. It was coordinator for her to take on, uh, the coordination of it. I believe.
The one in St. Anne's?
Yes. I don't believe they were looking to expand it to other places. They were looking to, um, because they, it's, it's really hard to get funding. They have been getting funding for years, but every year you have to change it to get funding and it's like, you can't like it's, there's nothing to change. It is what it is. And so they were wondering if it could be part of the the seniors' safety person Cassandra Yonder that we have, uh, if it could be part of her job or if another person could be hired to be help with the coordination of it.
Okay, so we haven't built another person into the budget. So same answer for that for even if it's theirs. And then she doesn't have the capacity at this time, uh, to to take on that. So, so not for this year, uh, but it could be something that could be considered for next year if that's part of what council is looking for.
Thank you. You and just in a minute says requesting a part-time contract person that would serve the whole county for a cost of fifteen thousand that came from. But either way, it's, it's not, we don't have the capacity to do that right now, but it could, it is your recommendation that we defer to, uh, budget deliberations next, uh, for next year. Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, any other questions in regards to C A O's report? Good, thanks. Um, we were just checking to. Can you check and? Okay, then we're going to move on to, uh, district concerns. We have a recess book, but there's specifics around that. So we're going to just delay that for a few minutes. So we will do district concerns and start with district number one, Council McNeil, please.
Thank you, Warden. Um, no, just a couple. Actually, I had a phone call about the PACE program. So I'll, I'll follow up with the individual that, uh, called me. Also, uh, there was a I received a phone call and email from, uh, an individual looking to extend the water line through Hazeldale. Uh, at, at this point, um, I will, uh, tell the individual that it's, it's not being looked at right now, but it could be in the future. So I just wanted to let the council know about that. Uh, and finally, um, I was in contact with M L A Keith Bain and hopefully this week I'll be, uh, on tour with, uh, Keith Bain and Steve McDonald on the roads in the area to see what work needs to be done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Oregon.
Thank you. I think you forgot my name there for a minute. Uh, I'd just like to, uh, send our condolences to Mr. Lyle Donovan over the passing of his mom, uh, last week. Um, big congratulations to the organizers, the donators, the people who bid and won at the Pinkalicious auction, a great fundraiser, was a great success. Um, I hope they don't have to use the money that could, that means people are sick, but it is there for those who are, uh, again, congratulations. Uh, the residents of White Point, I got a call that, um, people, tourists that are using the tittle, um, are leaving things behind that shouldn't be left behind. So the porta potty will be staying on the wharf for the month of August. I just wanted to let them know that. Um, since, uh, some of our council persons aren't going to be re-offering, I think it would be beneficial if we could have a package made up for the new councillors and the old ones that are going to be here. Uh, names, emails, address, um, uh, positions like phone numbers, benef-, you know, the benefits that you can get, um, our M L A's numbers, it's just so we can pass them on to constituents instead of always having to call in the office. Say the taxation office, we need to know who's in there, what their numbers are and things like that. I think it would be beneficial. And that's all for District Seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, Council Patterson, please.
Uh, thank you. One, just a couple of things, uh, uh, July first, I attended the, uh, event at the Raspberry Marine Park. Uh, six hundred and fifty people, I believe, attended. It was a beautiful day. Uh, there was lots of comment on the work that was done, uh, on the, uh, the old wharf, uh, which the county has contributed to. Uh, so that was very appreciative, appreciated. Um, two more, the, the foot clinics that we, uh, provided funding for, for the Big Bedore Hall had forty-two people in two days, I believe, and, uh, very popular. And the person who does them, she's a nurse and especially diabetics, I guess, there can be feet, foot problems that, you know, may not be detected unless there's some kind of diagnosis or whatever. So that's been very beneficial. And thirdly, uh, last Thursday, I attended a concert in a square dance. I didn't square dance, by the way, um, at the Big Bedore Hall where they made use of our stage. And, um, I'd like to thank Dan Coffin and Colleen Smith for their part in, uh, acquiring that stage and sending it out to the communities. I don't know if anyone else has used it. I talked to the person who set it up. They said it's simple. Uh, maybe simple for them, probably wouldn't be for me. But he said one person could do it, but it's nice to have two, he said. So it, it really was appreciated. They made a comment right at the beginning of the concert that the stage was, you know, supplied by the municipality. So, you know, fair bit of P R, good P R there. So anyway, that's.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Long, anything from your district tonight, please?
Uh, yes, I had a, um, an inquiry from the Cape Breton Bible Camp about the that they are no longer getting the tax exemption, which they've been getting since, I think, nineteen sixty-nine. They've always been getting the tax exemption and this year they were hit with an eighteen thousand dollar tax bill. Um, and, and I, I inquired about this before at the time when I saw that they weren't getting an exemption and I was told it was because it was a religious affiliation. Is that correct? Yeah. Um, but apparently churches get tax exemption and their religious affiliation as well. So I wondered, uh, like, what's the difference there?
So you guys passed a bylaw or a policy that had, that you are not granting grants to religious organizations. So that's approved by you guys. Uh, we u- use that and applied that consistently.
So do we exempt churches at that time when we, like, we said, we want, we don't want, like, I don't recall this. So we said, we don't want to give exemption to church. Uh, so. Affiliation, but we do want to give to churches?
No. So if a church applies for something, we don't grant that.
The church doesn't get exempt from tax either?
Depends on their assessment. So if they're assessed as not taxable or if they're assessed as exempt, then they wouldn't get a tax bill. So it depends on what their property assessment is. But if they came forward to have their taxes exempted after being charged a bill and they are religious, we would not, we would not grant. Based on your policy, we should not grant that.
Yeah, just, uh, any further?
Uh, yeah, it's just so that I know that the Cape Breton Bible Camp operates on donations from people and like they really can't afford to pay an eighteen thousand dollar tax bill. And like they do, it's such a wonderful organization and they've been exempt since nineteen sixty-nine and now they're not.
Okay, I'm going to go to Council, Deputy Warden and then to Council McLeod. Deputy Warden?
Uh, just to that point, um, I, I know St. Peter's Parish in Inghamish Beach, the church itself is exempt, but the gleave house and everything is taxed. So the church where it's actually a, a meeting place was exempt, but the actual properties are, are taxed. So the church itself is the only thing that is not taxed.
Council McLeod.
Um, are you aware of any programs that could help, uh, organizations like this with the taxes?
Not currently, no. So, um, there's several GoFundMes or, um, whatever, they could, don't ask for. No, not, yep. So there's several organizations that are taxed within the communities, right? So, um, you guys, it's your policy. Uh, I also noted afterwards, staff made the recommendations based on the po-, following the policy. And then it did come to you guys to pass or to vote on. So.
Yes, I recall when it was brought here and I know I brought it up that day that, uh, I was surprised that the, that they weren't exempt just because every other year they had been. Uh, so other, and other than that, in my district, uh, concerns, I wanted to give, uh, five hundred dollars to the Little River Port Authority and that was to help with the toilet that they have, uh, on the wharf they've had for fishing, but they also leave it for the tourist season because the beach there is busy and we have a shortage of washrooms on the North Shore. Um, and I wanted to give three hundred dollars to South Haven Weaver's Guild. Um, and two hundred and fifty to the, the Regatta and Bedak. So there were three hundred dollars for the South Haven Weaver's, uh, Weaver Spinners and Dyers, they're called, and two hundred and fifty for the Bedak Regatta. You mean Bedak Regatta? They are called South Haven Weaver Spinners and Dyers, and I sent this list, uh, to Xena as well in an email. And that's all for District Four.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Deputy Warden Dofny?
Uh, thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I, uh, kind of disappointed that Council McDonald's not here today, but just want to let everyone know how much we appreciate his work. Today is his twenty-fifth anniversary as a paramedic. Knowing what those guys go through to do twenty-five years in that job, I think is quite remarkable, but I just want to send a congratulations to, uh, Council McDonald on that. Uh, second, the, the main thing I've been hearing in Inghamish lately is probably the bridge at Inghamish Harbor. If anyone's traveled to Cabot Trail, it's, uh, it's a nightmare. Uh, there was some work done to it in the last couple of days. They've filled some of the holes, but the pavement is actually moving on the bridge and it's, uh, going all over the place. So I, uh, did hear back from Steve. He said, working with bridge engineer to come up with a permanent solution and sourcing the funding to. going all over the place, so I did hear back from Steve, he said, working with bridge engineer to come up with a permanent solution and sourcing the funding to resurface, it's a top priority in the area, and we hope to have a plan and contractor lined up soon, so just wanted to let residents know that, uh, they did just do some work on it, it was a lot better this morning, uh, but they are working on a plan to, uh, do it properly. Uh, third thing is, I, I want to say, uh, thanks very much to our staff and, uh, for getting out the RFP and everything for the Ingham Waterline Extension. Uh, as a project, I was quite amazed how easy and straightforward it was and how well they did at it. Uh, they rushed through it, I seen today, uh, they were actually flushing some hydrants, some water is actually flying through the system, so uh, it'll be good down the road, and when we get some major users on that system, it'll help other residents in lowering, hopefully lowering the, uh, water bills. So the more users we can get on the system, the better it is, but I just wanted to say thanks everybody for their hard work on that project, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Very much, Deputy Warden, councillor McLeod.
Thank you. Uh, just, uh, can I have that letter, send it to Megan Morrison, congratulation for her position at Direct of Care for, um, and for the hospital, to say, uh, tell her we are the open doors and, you know, like, I always we support the hospital, so anything she need, she is welcome to come.
Very good. New site manager.
Yeah, new manager. And then, I don't need a motion, right? And just, uh, want to, uh, comment for, uh, Chris, uh, Recreation, uh, people is very happy with all the programs around the village and around, so it's very nice to see all these activities for the kids.
Great, and I also heard Jackie that, uh, it will be going down north, and there will also be some winter activities. Yep.
I think people is enjoying the weather, so everybody's happy, yeah.
Thank you very much councillor. Um, just for District Three, nothing specific to the district, but had the good opportunity last week that, uh, we were able to go down to the hundredth birthday for Stella Capstick, and, uh, it was nice to be able to celebrate that milestone with her as a long-serving member of her community in Dingwall. So with that, we just wanna acknowledge that in the minutes, and we are going to take a ten-minute, I'm sorry, yes?
I had one more thing I wanted to say for District Four was, I want to send condolences to the Burrows and McCackern families on the sudden loss of Joe Burrows, um, who was also the, uh, local school bus driver for that district.
No.
And I wanted to just pass along my condolences from council.
Yeah, and thanks for doing that councillor, he's a very fine, fine man. Um, and councillor McDonald didn't have any district concerns to pass on, he notified us, uh, via email earlier today, uh, once he knew we would not be attending tonight. So we are gonna take a ten-minute break, we will reconvene at six o'clock sharp. So we're gonna reconvene council, and, uh, just, uh, for council, I, I did have a request from some of the folks in the back, a lower mics are for online for people to hear. People are having a little bit of difficulty between, a little bit of low talking and the, uh, heat pumps are on, so, and some people are not feeling a hundred percent either, so maybe a little difficult to hear, so we will do our best to, uh, increase our volume, uh, for the remainder of the meeting, and those of you that are here primarily interested in the Village of Bedak funding, because we are gonna get to you, it's just, it was a uh, an item that was added after our agenda was made, so it's, uh, it, we will be getting there, and we are working our way through there. So with that, uh, we're gonna move on to the next item, uh, and we're gonna have a staff report from CAO in regards to live stream meetings.
So there was a motion at the last council session uh, to livestream all, uh, committee, all council meetings. So any meeting that is three or more councillors at it is considered a law, is considered a council meeting. Uh, so we just wanna give a little background, we currently livestream council meetings, but any other not currently, uh, being livestreamed, uh, but there are minutes that are available for those. Uh, municipalities around the province have been surveyed to understand the process used, the process varies from not doing any livestream to um, doing some, doing a hybrid, doing all meetings. The MGA sets out that the actual record of council meetings is the approved minutes, which you just approved two sets of right now, which are currently posted on our website after they have been approved. Uh, council did have prior discussions on this and had tasked staff on pricing options to properly set up council chambers for live streaming. Uh, current system currently is a microphone set and an owl camera. It was decided in the past that investing in any audio system that is not portable, um, that could be, that could not be It was decided in the past that investing in any audio system that is not portable, that could be, that could not be ported to a new building. If that's what ultimately happens here, based on the uncertainty of this was not to go ahead with. But there was a, there was a council to go ahead with it. So just we, we do have it as a council priority to do a communications plan. Communications is currently working on a communications on that plan where we were hoping that it would all be decided together in that. In that document. However, we've received quotes on a proper system. So that means that every meeting now has to happen in this, in this office. We've seen down in Inghgash how the comments that come in based on bad sound from the owl system that we have. To move the mics, we have to move the large microphone system, which is not portable. So all that we have currently is the owl for that. So we could look into a portable system as well, but that means that every meeting has to happen in here. We've received some quotes on a proper system. They range from 80,000 to 125,000 includes panels, TV screens for public viewing. A voting system for council. We've also received from some companies, they are unwilling to submit a quote. Based on the setup of this room is not ideal for proper acoustic acoustics. They say the ceilings are too high. But to be able to move forward, we will also need a full time staff member. Cause that is going to be more, more than just this council session. That will also be overtime if the meetings are in the evenings. A portable system or a good portable system would run in the range of $60,000 to $80,000. Or we could contract someone to come in to do all the meetings. The quotes we have on that are $3,000 to $5,000 per session. Based on that, I'm looking for, or I've given you a few options. One option is to maintain the status quo and leave the decision up to the new incoming counselors, counselors. This would also mean rescinding of the motion that was just made last week. Another option would be to amend the budget for the two to three expenses, which would be approximately $260,000 this year. And proceed with the renovations for the acoustics, the video and audio and hiring of a live streaming specialist. And another option would be to amend the budget to contract out all of the work, which would be approximately 300 to $500,000 based on meetings held. So I'm looking for council's direction on which way to go with that.
So there we heard the report and I'm going to go deputy warden and then to council longer deputy warden.
Leanne, I've, I've only overhead one request for live streaming, only once. And that was an email. I'm just wondering how many requests have we had? Like, how many actual individuals have requested or is it?
So I have heard from maybe two.
Two people, two residents.
Two residents. Yeah.
I've also mentioned to a couple of people in Inghgash and they say they go to the minutes and they didn't seem to have an issue with. But anyway, I was just wondering how many for this outlay of money. I'm just wondering how many people are asking it. I think it's a great idea, but for the cost, I'm kind of skeptical.
And just before we leave that, just to follow up and I'll come to you counselor in a minute. Does anybody else had requests for live streaming? Is that this, I'm going to bear up next, but and then so nobody else has had, we just had.
Oh, question.
Counselor Longba.
Uh, yeah, I've had lots of requests for people mentioning that they would like live streaming because we have lots of people that can't drive to bedak. For the meetings, but I think that the staff should continue with doing the community, working on communication plan that they're working on. But I think that we should live stream. We have an owl and I guess I was brought up by people who lived through the depression. But you do with what you have and we have an owl that we use for our regular council meeting. So why can't we use it for our cow meeting as well, which is the meeting where we do a lot of discussion. So we could say meetings held in the bedak chambers are always live streamed when it's cow or council. But not for every like in your report, thank you for your report. You mentioned like Alderwood meetings. Well, that's, I mean, there's some of us, there's, yes, counselors go there, but we usually meet at Alderwood. And I don't think we should necessarily take the owl with us to the Alderwood meetings. They also do me minutes at that meeting. But I think for the, the meetings that we have here, since we have the equipment.
So the, the motion was, pardon, the motion was.
I changed the motion because I, like, I realized that every council meeting we is not really, you know, we can't go down to. You know Highland Manor and when we have a meeting there and live stream the Highland Manor meeting, that's a different kind of board anyway than a council meeting of all counselors. But I would, I will, I can rescind my motion I made last week, but I would like to make the motion that we live stream. The, the council and the cow meetings that we are holding in the council chamber here in the deck. Because we have the owl, which allows us to do that.
So just with that, then just for the people that are here, the cow meeting is committee, the whole, it's a, it's a council meeting as well. But it's not a formal council meetings where the regular business gets done. So if I paraphrase what you're requesting, you want to rescind your previous motion. And just before we move on that, I want to be clear that you're requesting now is that the. Live streaming would be done, council meetings and committee, the whole. I will just reference the fact that we received a lot of complaints over the quality of the owl and the difficulties people had both hearing and seeing. The commit. So I, I, I'm going to turn it over to C A O for, for comment in that regard.
Just exactly that. That's, that's why we're only doing the minutes that where there's motions at them. Because we are not set up. We are, we're a rinky dink setup with, we're trying to make things as accessible as we can. Which we did. And it was really popular, you know, right after COVID. Because we went from zoom meetings to here, but the, now that we're open to the public, we decided, you decided that we would do this meeting. And the, they're all open to the public and there is a viewing area downstairs where, or that is, I think, is in the accessibility plan or the communications plan. Is that there is a viewing area downstairs for anyone who can't make it up the stair.
So what is the preference counsel in regards to live streaming? Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden. Counselor Longba said she'll rescind that motion from last meeting. Does the second also have to agree? I'm not sure the, so, so do we know who seconded that motion? Me? Okay. So I would, I would second Counselor Longba's motion to rescind the motion that was made at the last council.
So we heard the motion to rescind all in favor.
I.
Contrary minded motion is carried. So the motion is rescinded. So I don't know if you had a.
I would like to make the motion that we, because I, I watched part of the last council meeting. It was actually sent to me. And I came across loud and clear. There was no problem with what, hearing what I was saying or seeing me in, in that. I didn't watch the whole council meeting, just that clip, but it was clear. I know some days maybe there's difficulties, but it's better than nothing. And it's what we have. I don't think we should spend a lot of money, like you said, like in this, because we don't know if we're going to stay in this building. So I don't think we should invest a lot of money in it. I don't think we should invest 50 or $60,000 to at this point to go portable. But at this time while we're here, so I make the motion that we continue to live stream the council. And also do the cow meetings that are in this room.
I'll second that.
And just, yeah, just one second. So it's been moved and seconded. I got to hold you because Jackie had her hand up.
A question on that.
So just, so you heard the motion all in favor.
No, I'm on discuss.
I have a question.
Sorry.
Is there an extra cost for this cow meetings to be live streamed? I guess it depends on like currently, this meeting is overtime for some staff. So if they're in the evenings, they are overtime. I don't know. Well, it will depend on how the quality is. I mean, it will be the same quality based on the owl streaming. So don't foresee a whole lot of other expenses related to it, but again, the sound is the sound. Picture quality is the picture quality. And usually at those meetings, there's presentations. So however clear the presentation comes in with staff here or with council here.
Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Warden. I just want to reiterate what Counselor Longba said, and I think it's important that we make the attempt. It may not be perfect, but as Counselor Longba said, she watched a part of it and it was clear. We have a responsibility to the public to be public. And if we can do council meetings, and I, I think there's some misunderstanding, a committee of the whole meeting is actually a council meeting. It, it's just has a different name and a kind of a different purpose, but if.
Any meeting of three or more is a council meeting.
Well, that's what I said. Yeah. But if we can broadcast the council meetings, I don't see any reason we can't. Broadcast the council committee of the whole meetings. And as for committees, most committees either report to council or to the committee of the whole. So we don't have to do committees right away now, if we don't have the capability or we can't afford it or whatever. But I think we should make a supreme effort to live stream and improve the quality, if possible. Of our council meetings and our committee of the home meetings. Thank you.
Are you asking us to invest more money as if we need improved quality? Like you just said, how much are you willing to invest? To improve the quality of them.
That's, that's a good question and I don't know the answer, but for now I think we should look at the. Live streaming the committee of the hall meetings too.
I, we just had an estimate between 200 and 500,000 dollars.
Oh, that was for everything. This is just one more meeting a month.
Yeah, using our, using our owl that we already have.
Yeah.
So are we satisfied if we want to cut to the chase on this, that if, if I understand correctly, committee of the whole meetings and council meetings will be. Streamed live via the technology we have now for the, at least until the end of this term of council.
Yes, and staff to keep working on their committee, their communication plan as they're doing.
Great. So do you want to incorporate that into a motion that, that's, that's your new motion that we use the present?
Yes, we live.
Technology.
Any of the whole and we, and the, and the committee of the whole meeting and the council, regular council meeting. Using the technology that we already have in this council chamber. And also that the staff keeps working on their communication plan.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a second for that, please? Counselor Patterson, all in favor? Contrary minded, motion's carried, status quo for now. And just keep in mind that that owl is not available if we go off site for council meetings. It just depends on the technology that's available. We should reference that as well.
The owl is portable. So you could take that to meetings, but we have seen how it doesn't work in a bigger room. It's good in small rooms. So you can.
Depends on your technology.
Depends on the techno.
Yeah, just depends on the technology. We're clear on that. Inghgash coastal central wastewater collection treatment survey results, C A O.
So, uh, just a little bit of an origin on this one. On May 27th, the province had a funding announcement. They were investing 7.3 million into the Inghgash wastewater project. As part of the municipal capital growth application that was submitted by the county. At the May 27th, 2024, meeting of council, it was discussed that next steps after receiving this announcement. But also hearing from the public about the displeasure around this infrastructure, we would be putting out a short survey to all those that were along the proposed route of the system. Which would encompass from the marina to the home hardware, the same lateral route as our water system. For documented opinions on this proposed infrastructure. So a bit about the survey, the survey was launched on May 29th. Staff used the assessment account number as the identifier on each survey and matched the A A N or the assessment account number. To the property owner's name. All surveys were sent with a pre-addressed stamped envelope and required a signature and a choice of yes, no. Or maybe within the next 10 years. The timeline for them to be received back was June 25th. Any that have come in since have also been accepted. We had staff that went down for two days in person to collect any surveys. For those that had either lost the originals or had comments or concerns and, or didn't want to mail them. And they collected a total of nine surveys while they were down there. The A A Ns and the answers were then matched to the map over there. That map's been sitting on table in my desk or in my office for, since. The end of June. It's mapped out a visual of the proposed route for reference. There was 372 surveys sent in total, including, which included government vacant properties, graveyards and three of our properties along the route. We've received 100, we received 189 surveys returned completed. That was at this point when I sent this out last week. We have current, we have now received 190 of those. One survey was signed, but no options chosen. So that's not on the board. Two surveys had incomplete addresses. The property taxes were in the county's name and they needed to be followed up on. So they are not on the board. One survey was returned to sender. The address was not found. So that's not on the board. Of the 187, now I put in your report 186, but another one came in, 187 returned surveys. There was 67 no's. There was 70 yeses and there was 53 maybes. So when you count out the yeses and the maybes within 10 years, that comes to 120 of the 372. It's relationship to council priorities. This directly correlates to council's priority of an Inghgash wastewater system. Which is in your strategic priorities document. So my recommendation is to proceed with the main route from the marina to the home hardware. As this system will be funded for the remainder by municipal Monday money, the secondary, so any offshoots off of that. Will have to be considered where there were the most concentrated yeses and maybes. Answers that we received and that can be, can be completed based on the budget, budgeted money that we have. So we'll ask an engineer to recommend those areas based on the survey results that we have. Anything past that or any advancement of our line will not be done. This is my recommendation will not be done unless there's more outside funding. Or a method to pass on the capital costs to residents using the system since we've asked them this one time in our initial stages. And again, an example of that would be the L I C to pass those costs on. So my recommendation, based on the survey results that we've received back, there was. 32% that we received that were in yeses, sorry. 34% that we received that were yeses and maybes, and there was 18 no's. So I'm recommending that we go forward with the lateral from the marina to the home hardware.
So thank you for your report. You heard the report for the Inghgash central wastewater collection treatment system. Any questions or comments? Deputy Warden.
Thanks, Leanne, for all the work and staff, for all the work they did on that. I guess, I guess when I look at it, even you look at the number of yeses and no's and stuff. I'm not that concerned right away. What's going on with it? My main concern is future development. And for instance, if I was already contacted by one resident as looking because of the septic going in the area, is looking at a 12 unit apartment building now. So that's what's going to come of this. It's, it's to get the infrastructure in the ground and then we can have development come around it. I agree with the main line from the marina over to the park. That'll take the majority of the area. But again, I think we need numbers. We need, like, when the engineer looks at it, we have to come up with the number. What is it going to cost to that? It's hard to make a decision if we don't know exactly what it's going to cost. So I think that's the next thing is to go back to the engineers and let them come back and tell us what they recommend and what the prices and costs would be. And then we can make a decision based on.
So we're in the process of that right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So next step, Sarah.
R F P out for the modules of the wastewater system. And then we will start pricing out the laying of the pipe in the ground. Yep. So it's got to be done by March 2026. If budgeted for it.
Yeah. Okay.
All the money, that money go back to the province? Is and is only for that project to be used?
Yeah, well, I, we could ask to have it amended somewhere else, but I think that's a whole other project in that the grant application is closed, so. But we receive the money for this actual project.
So other than the results being made public here tonight, is that information, is that the only avenue that we're going to present the information there?
Oh, no, we'll be, we'll be putting, well, this information will be available online. And I would expect that we're working on some kind of rollout of this to inform everyone.
Okay, yeah. It could be, yeah. So it's it's ongoing. Okay. So what do you need? Is there anything you need from?
We're trying to price things out. So until we're priced out, we.
So we're just accepting this as a report tonight. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Kitchen Fest request. Funding request.
Okay, so I believe included in your package was a request from the Gala College for Kitchen Fest funding request for ten thousand dollars. Not sure if you remember last year, um, it was late coming in. This year it was not received. Uh, they thought they sent it, but we did not receive it, so it was not in the packages for, um, us to look at and, uh, pass on or or recommend, um, money go out to them. So Rodney McDonald contacted me on June thirtieth, I believe it was. Um, then I believe he contacted the warden, wondering why they were not considered. Um, we have not received anything from them. Uh, when he looked back, he saw that it was on his side, that he did not actually send it or the package was too big or something, but we did not receive it. So he is now putting in a formal request. He's made it a formal request to bring it to council to see if they would consider funding Kitchen Fest for ten thousand dollars for this year.
Any questions, comments in that regard to the Kitchen Fest, Captain Deputy Warden?
You know, it's a great project and I totally support it, but this is year after year after year that we set a budget. We spend all this time making a budget. And then things come in afterwards and we were asked to look at it again. And we have to stick to our budget. Why do we do a budget at all if we're going to keep adding things on to it afterwards? I mean, uh, if maybe this is the first time, but this could be the third time that after the fact, ask for funding. Um, so my thought is we have a budget set and, uh, if we keep allowing people to not take it seriously that they have to do an application, then I mean, there's not much we can do about it. So anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Any other questions, comments?
So we give, um, money for the grants?
We gave them ten thousand dollars over the last number of years. Last year, their application was laid as well.
And we give some money at that time.
We did give them money after the fact. We did.
Um, was, yeah, so it's.
So, um, Rodney came in and had a meeting with the warden and myself in October, I think, of twenty twenty-three this past year. And he was looking for, um, several year sponsorship. And we said, we're not doing that any longer. Um, but made a reminder, I said, make sure you put it in your calendar to make sure that you send this in by March thirty-first. So, and he said that he would. Um, so he is asking for multi-year sponsorship. I think the pattern that council has had for now is at least not do it in the year of an election. Um, so maybe he will come forward next year asking for that. But, uh, for this year, we said, uh, we can't do it, but make sure that you have your your application in.
And tourist department don't have any, they don't have funding for any grants available for them?
They may be able to come up with something, but probably not the amount that they're looking for.
Well, yeah, but at least something, right? Like, uh, if I remember last year, they asked for money, but we didn't give them the total. We give some. But I would have, we have to look after how much, but I think was half of that. So I know it's very, you know, the tourist is, uh, important for our county. And they, you know, people is looking for live music and it's close to the village and surround areas, my district and everything, so.
Oh, this is a great project.
It's a great project. So I know they're asking for the ten. I understand that we had to set up, um, boundaries about that, but if the tourist department can find, uh, extra money for them, maybe we can give some.
Uh, so Dan just. Dan is listening online, and he just confirmed that no, he doesn't have any funding programs. He may have like a five hundred dollar.
No, but not in his department, but it's something provincial, like a, that can the grants
Oh.
out of, out of the county to just refer them and, you know, to find the money.
Well, we, we do fund festivals and events through ACOA and Destination Cape Breton. Uh, so they do receive, I'm assuming, I think they receive money through there. So I think that's the only provincial one that we have.
So it's the, uh, the intent is not to approve that, if I'm hearing that correctly? So it's too late, second year in a row? So, okay.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, but it's very important for our own, right?
Yeah, there's no question about that. It's a, it's one of the cornerstones to tourism right now, so. Guess we could give him a.
Do we know how much we gave you last year?
Ten thousand.
Would they give the ten?
Is it five? Because it was late.
Remember that discussion last year. They requested ten, but we ended up.
We, we gave him five.
Yeah.
So your options are zero, five, or ten. So we need to deal with it. So what's the consensus at council?
So five, but.
If we want to move on it, we have somebody has to make a motion that we give them five thousand dollars. It's voted on. And if it successfully gets it, if it's not, he's not.
I think that we will also have to like, like you can't just apply late year after year.
Agreed.
Like you do have to learn at some point that, you know, that you have to submit the thing, no matter who you are. You have to submit the things on time and not just come to the warden and the C A O afterwards and say, you know, I forgot, like, it is a, it's a great thing. The Kitchen Fest is a great thing, but still, like, if we're going to allow one person to always be late and give the money, then what about the other people that are late? Like, are we going to give them money too? Or we're just going to pick and choose who they are that are asking for the money? Because.
I agree. I move that we, uh, don't give them the money this year, that they should come next year looking for funds.
So the motion is we don't fund the Kitchen Fest this year due to the lateness of the application. Do we have a second for that, please? Second by the deputy warden, all in favor. Contrary minded, motions carried, or you're opposed. Counselor McLeod is opposed. So the motion carries by a vote of six to one. Your mic.
Another issue involved with that, too. I was at a B D B A meeting on Friday and, and, uh, okay, okay, okay. It's my voice, okay. I was at a B D B A meeting on Friday and, uh, they said, uh, they didn't send it well. They said that they sent a request in, it was in the same envelope as S A P, S A P uh, request. And at the time, I was kind of, uh, for budget talks, I was kind of shocked that they didn't send, uh, a request in, and I brought that up, budget talks. It's two thousand dollars that we have given every year since the last, since I've been on council. And I know every municipality in Cape Breton had paid up with B D B A now. So we'd be the only municipality that that didn't pay this two thousand dollars. So I'm, I'm asking that, uh, I'll make a motion that, and I brought it up at, at budget talks, that money be set aside for uh, if the request comes in. And I do have the request, I have to send it. They sent it to me again. So I make that a request that B D B A be given two thousand dollars for.
So do you have that referenced in the minutes? Uh, do you, can you find it in the minutes that you asked for that money to be put aside?
Uh, uh, it was at the budget talks.
I recall that at the budget talk.
Yeah.
That Paul brought it up because they had asked for it every year.
Year after year, they, they, they. Uh, and I did warn them, uh, to get the application in. And they came, uh, uh, they had a presentation, uh, S A P slash B D B A had a presentation probably about two weeks prior to, uh, budget talks. But for some reason, they missed.
So how about let us check back in the minutes and just confirm that. And if it is, it'll come to the next council meeting and then you can make the recommendation then if we have record of it.
Okay.
So is the council okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go for that. Just a question about the last one. We didn't finish. We finished with the motion.
Oh, okay, so.
No, uh, I know they brought, uh, no, right, but, uh, we have, what is, uh, the line, the council projects, right?
Special project.
Special projects. So just as my second attempt to at least five thousand dollars. Uh, I, I know the process from the grants there, uh, until March, but this involve uh, tourism. It's involve, uh, the, the revenue coming to our county. The tourist people, you know, they, everybody comes for everywhere to listen to music. It's attraction for the county, attraction for hospitals, hotels, restaurants to kids. So I just wonder if they can change their mind and just give five thousand dollars. But it's just my another attempt.
I think counsel, this motion went and went through and
Okay.
the answer was no, not in support.
So that's good.
Anyway, thank you for those comments. Next item up is one of quite interested, has the village, uh, the deck funding request. We had, uh, visit, uh, the village, I'm sorry. Oh, first reading. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm got ahead of myself. Kitchen Fest, first reading of the yard sale bylaw. So you saw that? We just need a motion to approve the first reading of that bylaw. Move by, you moving?
No, just a question, Warden. Clause three A. The days of the week that they're permitted? I'm just wondering what the reasoning reasoning for that is. If you, if you, I know the intention is not to have them run forever, but that would be covered by, uh, no sale, maybe more than three consecutive days. But are we being rather limiting by just making it weekends and holidays?
Yep.
Is that, that's the, why are we limiting it to weekends and holidays, I guess?
Well, I, I would say traditionally, that's when most of them happen on the weekends when people are.
Yeah, but what if somebody wanted to have them on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
I don't know.
That's illegal? No, I'm just saying, like, if you have, the intention is to not have them go forever. That's covered by the last line where it says no sale, maybe more than three consecutive days. So you can only have it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday. But limiting it to Saturdays, Sundays, that's not even three consecutive days. That's only two. You know, the wording of that, they, they, it's three consecutive days down below, and it doesn't include the Monday. So that's only two consecutive days.
So what would you suggest as an amendment?
Anyway, I'm just asking the question.
I would suggest any day. But it can only be three consecutive.
Yard sales one day. One day. Okay, we can amend it to. Sorry.
Isn't that two separate points where it says it may only be conducted on site Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays between these hours? And then it also says no sale, maybe more than three consecutive days. So if you have it Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Thursday, you're in the wrong on the Thursday. So, correct, but you also, if you did choose to have one on other days, that's not allowed.
Oh, you can't stop more than three days. So what do we want to change it to? Okay, okay. All right, we note that amendment, it's three consecutive days, not specifically Sundays. I'm not sure if I'm clear on.
To be, to clarify, can you read what you wanted to say so that for the minute?
Just take Saturday, Sunday. I get it. Okay, we okay with that amendment? Okay, can we have a motion to accept, uh, its first reading with that? No to change, please.
Someone?
Thank you, Counselor McLeod. We have a second, please?
Second.
Second by the deputy warden, all in favor. Contrary minded, first reading is done. Uh, first reading amendment to the Water Supply and Septic Upgrade Lending Bylaw.
To be clear, the only changes on this was to change it from ten to fifteen thousand.
So you can borrow up to fifteen thousand under this program, and that's an increase from previously it was ten thousand. So we have a motion to approve the first reading of the Water Supply and Septic Upgrade Bylaw, Lending Bylaw.
So moved.
Moved by the deputy warden, seconded by.
Second.
Counselor McNeil, all in favor. Contrary minded, motions carried, first reading. Finally, we're going to the Village of Bedek funding request. So we had, uh, representatives from the village come in to see us a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, they were looking for funding for, uh, two, uh, cost share funding for two different programs, as we understand it. One was for maintenance and upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant. The second was engineering study to develop a capital plan. So, uh, we were given, uh, indications of what those costs would be. The motion at that time was to, uh, refer to staff and ask for a staff report, which we did receive from Alex uh, today. So we were given three options. And those options were sent to you this afternoon or earlier, late last week, council. You had a chance to review them. So, I, do you want to talk about what the options are or do? Perhaps you do a better job explaining it than I will.
So.
Sorry.
I thought. I was the same thing on this one. So we received two specific funding, um, requests from Victoria County Council for consideration. So the first was maintenance and upgrades, uh, to the wastewater treatment plant. This was for a duration of the next three years. The grant funding request, it was two hundred and eleven thousand, uh, because there was two hundred and eleven thousand received provincially. The total cost was four hundred and twenty-two thousand over three years, uh, which was implied by the grant amount. So the funding request was up to two hundred and eleven thousand over three years, which would be seventy thousand, three hundred and thirty-three a year. The second was an engineering study to develop a capital plan. The duration of that was the twenty-four, twenty-five year. The grant funding was they were applying for provincial funding to fifty percent cost share. The total cost of three hundred and eight thousand, so the funding request for that from council was a hundred and fifty-four thousand. Some further considerations were council does not typically commit to multi-year requests on an election year, which I just had mentioned, related to uh, Kitchen Fest, I think. Um, fully funding these requests would result in the village not, um, contributing any funds directly themselves. And this year, um, currently twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents was provided to the Village of Bedek Water Utility for their property tax relief. Um, the municipalities operating capital budgets have already been set and approved. But the funding request breakdown was seventy thousand, which was the first year, seventy thousand, three thirty-three, which is fifty percent cost shared. The engineering study of fifty percent cost shared, which was a hundred and fifty-four thousand. The motion made at, uh, on that June twentieth meeting was, um, any requests would have the property tax relief that was granted taken off of that. So that was twenty-seven thousand, five thirty. So the maximum amount that could be funded. So the maximum amount that could be funded or that, um, uh, for consideration would be one ninety-six, eight oh three. So option one would be a direct funding contribution. So this would be, if the county provided direct funding from the operating reserve, a hundred percent of that would be the one ninety-six, eight oh three, fifty percent of that would be ninety-eight, four oh one, seventy-five percent would be one forty-seven, six oh two, and twenty-five percent would be forty-nine thousand, two hundred. Uh, another option would be a loan. So we could offer an option of a low interest loan to the village of a deck. So in the recent, in recent years, the municipality has provided a twenty-year interest-free loan to Victoria County Water Utility to cover the unfunded portion of the Niels Harbor Water Treatment Plant. The municipality also over, offers loans to residents for water and septic upgrades over ten years with an interest rate of eight point nine five percent, which is prime plus two percent. And for our clean energy upgrade, um, loans, which are over ten years currently, um, they are at an interest rate of four percent. So there's a few different scenarios there. Uh, the thought was to, if a loan was given, it would be at a rate of five percent, which we thought was sort of halfway in the middle and, uh, reasonable interest rate to get back. So there were several different funding options that you were given there for the one ninety-seven, the one fifty, the one hundred or fifty. And the third option would be to provide a one-time funding contribution and offer an option for a loan for the remainder. So the recommendation from the finance department was to offer a fifty thousand one-time direct funding contribution to be funded through the municipality's operating reserve. And then to provide a maximum of a hundred and fifty thousand loan at five percent for up to five years. Uh, this would make the annual loan payment from the village of thirty-four thousand, six forty-six. And this would, uh, generate interest to the county of twenty-three thousand, two thirty-one.
Good. Thank you. Excellent. So we have seven counselors here. We had three options. So we'll, we'll just check with counselors, see which option you like. Which everyone, uh, receives fifty percent or more is more than likely the option we're gonna go with.
So those were options. You also feel free to step outside the box too. And if you have your own ideas around.
Anybody have any other options prior to? We, uh, we have time for to speak after the meeting or after the.
Given the conversation that you weren't addressing late application, you were hoping it would have been a misrepresentation of that. Council canceled the meeting that we had requested around this topic.
Yeah. Okay, point taken. And I, I think in fairness too, we weren't sure what the was on the agenda at that meeting at that time. So with that, here, these are the options that are outlined. And we do appreciate, A, the work the new commission has done. And we do appreciate what you're facing. Um, so with that, it is a council decision. Who likes option number one? And he takes it as an option number one. I like option number one. Anybody like option number two? Anybody like option number three? So there's six. Sorry, Jackie, what? So it's six for option number three. One for option number one. So that's where we're at. That is, uh, a council's decision. We need a motion to, uh, recommend option number three to the village to, for their funding request.
Some stipulations be added into that?
With in regards to?
Uh, water rate study, um.
That's water rate studies.
And we'll be doing one within the next two years. Uh, that's been mandated by the U A R B. And we'll comply.
Just wondering, uh, when you expect the, uh, rate study to be done and when would you expect the rates to be locked in? We're hearing, what we're hearing from water utilities is they now realize that you guys are paying, uh, the next ability to pay one point seven, one dollar per cubic, is it cubic meter? And we're paying six dollars, thirty-three cents.
No, we're paying six dollars and eighty-six cents.
Six eighty-six. So there's a huge difference there. So it's really costing from the other water utilities that they want to pay for. So that's why, just wondering when you think that might come into place. That will give you the added revenue to the water.
So. Am I allowed to answer?
And can I add something to that too? Our base rate now is a hundred and twenty-five, forty, and the village is forty dollars and sixty-one cents.
Sure. So I can answer, that's sort of a three-part answer. One, we just increased our water rates. So there hadn't been a water rate study for a significant period of time and you can't increase the rate without a study. So that was something that the current commission was, we needed to do. We knew our rates were too low. There were concerns at the U A R B hearing in December that there would be need to be a significant raise, but they only raised the rates incrementally. So we will be doing another water rate study in two years and we would anticipate that those rates will also increase at that point. Um, also want to keep in mind that the vast majority of the funding is not actually for the water system. It's for the wastewater system. Um, so we're looking at, and Roman would have better numbers than mine, but for the engineering study, for example, so that hundred and fifty-four, uh, cost share that we're looking for, only about seventy thousand of that is for the water and two hundred and thirty-eight of it is for wastewater. Uh, similarly to the M C G P grant, the fifty percent of the twelve eleven, um, only sixty percent of sixty thousand dollars approximately is for water. The rest is for wastewater treatment. So I think that's important. If you're concerned about the water rates specifically, um, the vast majority of what we're asking for is actually going to be designated to the wastewater treatment plant, not the water system.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, um, fifteen percent of, I, I guess we call it the gas tax. Um, will that, if in the future, will that be going towards the wastewater system and the water system instead of anything else?
Absolutely. So one thing that we do know that's going to come out of the engineering study is that we are going to need to do upgrades to both of our systems. So we are above capacity. We're overdrawing environmental levels at the, at the wall, at the well for water. We've overdrawn our treatment system. Plant for the water system is functioning during the busy season at twenty-three and a half hours a day. Um, the wastewater system, we had thirteen bypass events last year, some of those lasting over a hundred hours. So the engineering study, we know that the, the three hundred and fifteen and change that's going to cost us to get the study is only going to be the drop in the bucket because they're going to tell us the upgrades that we need to make. So certainly the former gas tax fund will most definitely be going towards those capital upgrades that we know we need to make. So yes, absolutely.
So Deputy Warden, did you have a question for Chair? Any other questions or comments?
And I think one more comment as well is that if the village ceased to exist, which was a very real possibility not that long ago, um, these systems would be the sole responsibility of the municipality, right? So the, and in terms of the village's contributions, we contribute the entirety of the operating costs. So the staff belongs to the village. Things break down, you know, filters need to be replaced, probes need to be replaced, the village, the tax rate, the sewer rate and the water rate cover those things. But what we're asking for is for the municipality to come to the table with the capital funding.
Thank you. Any final comments? So we need a motion that, uh, we're going with option number three. We have six in favor, uh, of option three, one in favor of option number one. We need a motion that somebody is going to proceed that we, uh, offered the village. Option number three, it has to be done in form of a motion. Is somebody prepared to make that a motion?
A motion that we, uh, proceed, but option number three?
Have a second for that, please.
My second that.
Second by Counselor McNeil. It's been moved by the deputy warden. All in favor? I am not in favor of option number three. Um, so I will vote a nay vote. All right, so. Yeah. Sorry, we're gonna, uh, Gary, we're gonna open it.
I think he's just asking you to, to be specific on what option three was. Is that the?
Uh, okay, if you want to restate option three, yeah, go ahead. You have it there, please. Number three is as follows, and Leanne will provide that.
Yep, fifty thousand as a one-time direct funding contribution to be funded through the municipality's operating reserve. And then a maximum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan at five percent for up to five years. Uh, which would make the annual payment from the village of thirty-four thousand, six forty-six. Uh, and total interest earned, which would be over the five years, I believe, twenty-three thousand, two thirty-one. So a five percent loan of a hundred and fifty thousand.
So is that clear to you, sir? Thank you. So that is the option that's been recommended by council. It'll be up to the village to make their decision. And, uh, with that, we're gonna move on. I'm sorry. Uh, we did, we did.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, we voted on it. It was six to one. And there is, uh, we allow questions from the public at the end of the meeting, just if there are any questions in that regard. And we allocated about twenty minutes for that. Committee of Correspondents.
Any that we've received, we've sent out and any that you've requested, we have sent as well.
Thank you very much. Any committee reports?
Uh, just one, uh, we have the B C T meeting. Yeah. We have B C T meeting today. It's for, um, just, uh, with the news, uh, we partnership with Alderwood for, um, for the seniors can have some transportation around the village.
Thank you for your report. Anybody else? Counselor McNeil, speaking to your mic and loudly, please.
Maybe I'll scream. Uh, uh, no, I was at the beat about meeting on Friday. There was a presentation from Liliana, uh, uh, Industries. They're looking at decarbonization, uh, in, within the Bredora Lakes to have a central location in Iona to, to base this. And, and it was a interesting presentation and maybe we should, uh, try to get, uh, the, them to present to council too.
Okay, thank you. We will extend the, yes, Counselor Patterson.
A short one, uh, Warden, the defensive arbitration committee met, uh, on July eleventh and, uh, considered a complaint. And the conclusion was that the committee would take no action at this time, but a letter was sent to the complainant and the, the complainer, I guess. I'm not sure the terms, uh, because we had had information from the person who owned the herd that he was making efforts to, uh, repair the fences and so on. So we gave him, uh, kind of a time, I guess, to see if that was true or not. And also if it continues, there will be, uh, further action taken. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? We are, uh, where's my agenda? So if there's any questions, I know there's quite a few people here. We're interested in what the, uh, decision would be on the village request. So if you have any questions, we have about twenty minutes. If you have any questions you want to ask council, I would ask you to come to the mic that John Bain was at, state your name. You got one minute for your question and we want to make sure everybody that wants to make a comment gets to make a comment. We're gonna keep it to one question, one comment, so that everybody gets a chance. Who wishes to come forward? Sorry? Yeah, move. It's just for continuity and make sure your green button's on so we know the mic's on. And just state your name, please.
In our new hookup, the water and wastewater treatment plant, as stated at the last council meeting that we were at, the water system and the wastewater system extends beyond the village boundaries. And so that is going to impact the capacity for new development. There will be no building permits approved with the requirement to hook up to village sewer and water. Those have been stopped since December and the, the suspension will be until we have good information from our engineering study. Also a reminder that the village of Bedeck residents do pay thirty cents for a thousand dollar assessment, an increased tax rate. And so I think I can speak clearly for the village commissioner that we are extremely disappointed that that was the decision of council and we will be coming back to council, uh, with another request. So again, the impact, it is not in the village's mandate to do development. So it is our responsibility to protect the current users of the system. So again, when that R F P is completed, similar to what Counselor Oregon asked about, um, will the capital money be used to upgrade the system at this point? Protecting the current users will be our mandate. So I think that's important for council to understand that it's going to have a direct negative impact on capacity for the county to grow in this region. So.
Yep. No, we, we hear you and, uh, council's heard you and we can't commit beyond this, uh, beyond this year either, be beyond this council term.
And fifty thousand dollars.
Let's. Yeah, it's, it's, it's fifty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar low interest loan to.
We could, we will discuss at our next, uh, commission meeting and we would welcome the counselors. Any who may be interested to come to our village commission meeting. It's on the second Wednesday of every month at six thirty at the village office. So we would encourage you to come. We've been hearing from the public who are asking for building permits. And again, we've had to suspend those permits. And it's, it's definitely problematic and the water and wastewater system has been neglected for a significant period of time. It's also important to note that the wastewater system did not always belong to the village of Bedeck. The capital investment in that wastewater plant initially was made by the municipality and the agreement to our understanding was that the village covered the operating costs and it would be municipal infrastructure. So that piece of infrastructure is at its, its life expectancy, right? When the announcement was made, it was fifteen to twenty years and that was twenty-some years ago. So investment needs to be made and the village cannot afford to do it on our, we'll be back.
Yeah, I can tell you that I also received, uh, comments from, uh, similar to what you had mentioned about the inability to connect from residents, their inability to connect either new development door or, uh, new hookups outside the village boundaries. So I, I'm well aware of it as well as the local counselor. So thank you for your comments. Anybody else have anything they want to?
As your meeting?
Village office.
Any other questions, comments? Going once, going twice. Thank you very much.
One, that there was no, no, neither C A O or, or, uh, or officers reported a missing person in the village of Bedeck. Uh, I had serious concerns about how that situation was managed uh, in terms of communication, in terms of mobilizing local folks to help find that gentleman. Um, so I just wanted to put that on the record that we're extremely concerned. Um, I got the Facebook message. I'm probably a demographic where we viewed that particular type of communication. I got that at eight o'clock in the morning. Because I didn't hear anything else, I sort of assumed that he had been found. And then the helicopter was over my head at three thirty that afternoon. I was surprised that I had heard nothing since then. So I went to the rink, um, I offered support to, uh, search and rescue, asking if they needed volunteers to be mobilized, fire department. Um, it's my understanding that none of the D N R officers were utilized to have GPS systems tracker, the A T V who's on the ground, local knowledge, but the volunteer fire department was not mobilized. Again, it's on the ground. Uh, and I had emails back and forth with, uh, the warden and C A O around communicating using the Voyager alert system. I also recognized and put on the record that I probably overstepped my boundaries and pushing the R C M P officer to send out that Voyager alert system uh, message, but I felt strongly that it accesses folks that probably shouldn't have known about that if they haven't checked Facebook or can follow the R C M P page. So I would implore that in future, if there is a missing person and the R C M P had already put out a statement at that point that if the municipality has made aware of those situations, that the Voyager alert system be used immediately because. that if the municipality made aware of those situations, that the buoyant alert system be used immediately, because we knew he was on, RCMP indicated that he was on foot, and certainly time is of the essence, so I was very disappointed in how that handled. And had numerous folks reported to me that they had gone to the command center and asked how they could help, and they returned away. So I think that perhaps that's something that should be examined from a communications perspective and from an EFO perspective.
Great, thanks, and I can assure you that we collectively were also very concerned about the missing individual. We followed the protocol that was recommended to us by the people that were responsible for the search and rescue. We were in contact, I was in contact with the RCMP directly, with you as well. Leanne and I spoke several times, and we were following the directions that we were given, and I'm not sure if there's anything else you wish to add to that.
Yep, so our senior safety officer reached out to the RCMP at eight AM in the morning, when the message came out, offering their request for whatever they could offer, and we didn't hear anything back. So we are, we follow our, we have municipal protocols for use, use of our buoyant system. The village also has the ability to use the buoyant system in whatever protocols they have. We use ours for municipal items only, and at the request of the RCMP, we will also put out on behalf of them. So if the village has a different way that they want their buoyant used, they, that is certainly up to the village. But the way that we use it is for municipal items.
And I did make a formal request. Not, I don't think, to the RCMP, that if you're requiring an official request from the village, we are requesting officially, and they indicated that they would take direction from the municipality, and the municipality indicated that they would take direction from the RCMP. But when I spoke to the RCMP officer, I said, is there a reason why the system has not been used? They said, no, there's no reason, the information is already public, if the municipality chose to set, chooses to send it out, they're well within their capacity to do that. So I think we need to move from a, we're just gonna take direction from our CMP, to say, we are a small community, we have the capacity to do things and to offer things, and I think we should probably, in a situation like this, use perhaps common sense outside of potential protocol. So I did make an official request on behalf of the village to use the buoyant alert system, and that was not accepted. And I think the RCMP officer that I spoke to told me that there was no reason why buoyant alert system couldn't be used, that they were not making a request in this way. I also take issue with the RCMP not having used their systems, but that's a conversation for another group, because obviously that's beyond council's capacity. But we do have a communication system that the municipality uses, and I think consistently part of our frustration at the village is things sometimes get thrown back, say, well, that's a village responsibility, but we are also residents of the municipality. And so if the municipality has a system that exists, that potentially make a protest, goes by that gentleman, I think that it probably should have been activated. I certainly see a missing person in the municipality as an issue, that if we can send out an alert, because garages are going to be made, or offices are going to be shut down early, it's certain, we could utilize that system for that reason. Again, if it would have required a message, it was just the vetting message that the RCMP thought it was supposed to have made. Perhaps, and that's, just wanted to have that.
Yeah, and, and certainly when they wrap up their investigation of the event, you know, there will be consultations with many. And if there's lessons to be learned, and we have to learn some lessons, we're prepared to accept that as well. Yeah, and that depends whether it impacts something that's current, whether it could impact their investigation, we don't know, and that's why it's, there's cautionary parts to that as well. Yeah, we can. Yeah. Sorry?
If that report could be shared.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. We can do that. Yep, thank you. All right, no further questions or comments? We will ask for a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for the folks that came out this evening.